So seven o'clock, call the Halifax planning board into session. Members present, Rick Murray, Mark Milius, Amy Troop, and Gordon Andrews. On the agenda, we have a 7:05 Josh Liddell, 285 Home Street. 7:30, we have Flowers and Soul, 890, 894 Plymouth Street, special permit. 7:45, we have a continuation of the hearing for Flower and Soul on the site plan at 894. Discussion, we have Zero Mon Ponson Street, letter from the fire department. Two complaints for 649 Plymouth Street regarding the lighting at Twin Lakes Liquors. Franklin Street solar relay, pasture lane update, subdivision controlled, chapter 235, section 6C, A and I timeframe. And we have one set of meeting minutes. And then the correspondence. Do you have a motion to accept the agenda as read?
A motion to accept the agenda is read.
All right. And then the first thing I would like to do is to see if we get a motion to shut off the chat.
I'll get a motion, I'll motion to shut off the chat.
And the reason.
Just because I'm not sure I understand.
The reason for asking for it is because it's a public meeting that we're having. And anytime that somebody wants to speak, they can raise their hand and identify themselves. Because what's been going on with the chat is we don't know who it is. And it's been interrupting the meetings. And if we were in person, those people would have to be recognized before they speak. And it's the same thing here. So.
Okay, you're talking about the text on the side?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I see what you're going with. I agree with that, where normally you would have to be acknowledged and I agree.
Okay, so I have motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, we'll do a roll call. Rick?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Amy?
Yeah.
Gordon, yes. Did everybody get a chance to look through their folder?
Yes.
Copies of the updated site plans, everybody?
I only have the one for Flower and Soul, I didn't receive one for 285 Home Street. I did in the meeting minutes packet.
Right, but we only had Flower and Souls as the big, everybody got a big set of plans for that?
Yes.
Yes.
Rick?
Yeah, Flower Soul, yeah, I don't have a deal.
Okay. So we have it to go over.
Did we get to notify 649 Mon Ponson Street about the complaints and invite them to the meeting about it or?
There was a letter, an email today from the owners.
I'm at 645 Mon Ponson Street, 649, I'm here. I'll call Nell again and Adam Anderson.
Okay, that's gonna be further down the agenda, but we'll call on it. Okay. Do we have Josh Liddell with us?
Yes, I am on.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna have to recuse from Liddell, I'll just have to sit in the audience, so.
Okay, is Joanne with us?
You know, that might be an unforeseen thing, if you shut off the chat, we may not be able to communicate with her. I'm not sure how that works.
Well, she could still raise her hand. I don't see her listed, that's, that's what, so. So we'll make a note that it was at 7:05 that Rick has recused himself.
Got it.
All right, so we're opening up the site plan review for 285 Home Street. Josh, if you, you want to lead off, let us know whether it is you're doing here.
Right now, we filed a permit to put an addition on the existing foundation.
Okay.
And that's where we're at right now.
And we have a, we have a plan of that?
Yes.
And what is the use gonna be?
It is for storage only.
Did you get a determination from the zoning officer?
Say that again?
Did you get a determination from the zoning officer on the use?
I believe so, yes.
Do you have it, that you can share it with us?
No, I guess I misunderstood the question, I don't have.
Well, normally he gives a determination of the use that you're going to do, whether or not it fits the zone. And then tells us what that is, so that we can look up what you need for parking and all that stuff.
Oh, no, I did not, I was not aware I had to do that.
Okay, so could you give us an idea of what the use is going to be?
It's just for furniture storage.
Okay. And what do you now have for parking there?
Right now, it's just.
You know the number of spaces?
No, it's not really, it's just kind of a gravel base with no designated parking spots. That's how it was when it was purchased.
Okay, so the, is the use changing?
No.
From what it was when you bought it?
Well, I believe when it was purchased, it was just like a wood shop. So right now, it's just gonna be primarily for antiques furniture storage, that's it.
Okay, so no, no employees?
No, no office space, no employees, nothing.
All right.
Are you gonna be making any furniture or anything in the regular?
No. No.
It shows here that you're gonna have four plus, one, two, three, four, five, nine spots out front?
That's what was drawn up, I don't, I think we just have, per Gary Rice, he thought it would be best just to show designating parking spots. But there's no, there's not gonna be everyday use at that place. So he thought it would be best to show parking spaces, I don't know if he's on the call, I gave him the info to call in, but I don't know if he did.
He's getting on now, I believe. Yep, there he is. Can we unmute Gary?
He might be muted himself.
Maybe.
How's that? Is that better?
We got you.
Yeah, I just took the minimum for the size of the addition in the building. I just, I just gave him the minimum space is required, that's why there's nine there. And I gave him one space actually, just to have for an employee too, because obviously somebody's gonna come into the building. But that's why we came up with the number nine. I could have just left it as it is now, nothing striped out there, obviously, it's just park where you want to. You just wanted to try to make it a little nicer. And have it a little more uniform like you would have for a typical site.
Okay. You meet all the setbacks?
Yep.
You don't need a zoning variance or anything, correct?
No.
So basically, it's just a continued use with larger storage?
Exactly.
You gonna sell, just out of curiosity, are you gonna sell antiques like on, like some sort of marketplace or?
No, not, no, I don't think so. I mean, my aunt and uncle have just collected a lot of antiques over the years, and they're just, that's where he's gonna put everything now.
Mark, did you have any questions?
The, the plan looks good, actually, the zoning analysis table helps, kind of puts everything out in front. Everything looks good to me.
Amy, anything else?
No, I can attest to the fact that it's been that for years.
Hey Josh or Gary, did you have anything else to add?
No.
I think we're good. Yeah, Gordon, can I talk?
Yeah, I'll open it up to the public now. Yep.
I just, I just had, you know, a lot of questions on the drains, is it proposed they cut here? You know, there's a lot more going that they've done there that involves a lot more than just some parking spaces out front and putting the addition on. They totally clear cut the whole piece of property to an half acres, hauled out all the lawn, leveled it, put, you know, a gravel pack on the whole area. There's an awful lot of water coming down that, that lot, it's not, the lot isn't anywhere near what it was when they bought it. And I just think that they gotta have a lot better stormwater management. You know, from what I've learned from the EPA, anytime you disturb more than one acre of property, you have to file with them with a notice of intent before you do any of that. Which I don't know if they have or not, but it's just showing two little leachant basins they stuck in after they bought the place that's gonna handle all this water. I mean, looking at the notes here, you know, number seven, it says, "Proposed paved parking to slope to surrounding impervious areas and not on the home street." Now, how does it go on to impervious areas and not on the home street? If you drive by there and look at the property, it's coming down the hill like a banshee right at the street. Nothing to stop it with all the catch basins out in the street, they're gonna get the water. You know, even the, the topo lines, you know, they stopped at 76 halfway up the lot. From there on is where it gets a lot steeper, there's a lot of water coming down there. And when they gravelled that whole area, they spilled gravel down over the slopes to the tee, never restabilized. And those slopes are all stabilized before, they're not stabilized now, they're running down in the bad ditch, filling their drainage ditch. So they just, you know, they just made a big giant gravel park lot, threw a chain link fence around it and called it a day. And threw a little couple of leaching basins in, you know, in my opinion, I'm no expert on stormwater, but to me, it doesn't seem, it just doesn't seem right, doesn't seem like it's gonna work. So I think there's, you know, there's a lot going on here, in my opinion.
Okay. Josh or Gary, do you have any?
One thing I could say is that note, I just, just read it again, and it should be pervious areas, not impervious areas. The point is to have the pavement grade off to the surrounding gravel, and then when it gets into the gravel, it's gonna go into the ground, probably before it reaches those basins.
No, it's not gonna go in the ground, Gary, it's all hard pack, what Landis calls Q-pack, it's all recycled material. That's, that's compacted there, and it's not, and with the, and the way the grades are running down the hill, there's no way it's gonna leach into the ground, it's just coming right down. And not only that, it's just they removed all the vegetation, everything from every inch of the property, opened up all their butters on Eldana to the train to them, no consideration for neighbors whatsoever. No screening, no nothing, on a, on a good windy day, all it does is blowing dust in their yards. You know, they, it's just, I just, maybe go down and do a site visit, have the board go down and take a look at it and see what we come up with. I, I just, obviously I can't vote on it, but I don't see how this can fly.
Rick, do you have those EPA laws that I can look at?
Um, yeah.
Forty CFR 122 dot 26 B 14.
What was it?
Forty CFR 122 dot 26 B 14.
Rick, is your concern more for the proposed paving area than the addition?
Oh yeah, I mean, it's just for all the stormwater that's coming down there to the, to the street. I mean, the addition is, it is what it is, I mean, they, they've already reworked the foundation, I guess the building inspector gave them permission to, to rework the foundation because it was too close to the lot line, they've done all that. In fact, their building's sitting there, ready to go up. But I just think that this, the way they've, I, I just kind of learned things about stormwater. And they did an awful lot of disturbance there that I think should be considered.
Well, I, I agree with, with the note. Oddly enough, I read it as if it was supposed to slope to the surrounding pervious areas, it's just, unfortunately, I didn't pick up on the error, that's how I read it. But that, that note aside, I don't see them adding much more pervious area, I believe what's there now is a dense pack for parking, right?
Yeah, it's a dense pack, it's called Q-pack that Landis makes. And they hauled, they must have hauled, they had a six yard load to haul and blow them out of there at the days, it probably took at least 2,500 yards of lawnmower site.
Especially where, like, the, I don't know, unfortunately, kind of considered part of that, like, out of the scope of this. I'm just looking at the impact and the difference between what's proposed and, and what's existing.
Yeah, but it wasn't existing when they bought it, they did that to the property. If they let, if they left all the trees alone so they can soak up the water, there probably wouldn't be any problem. See, I mean, they say they're gonna steal furniture in the building, but what are they gonna do with the rest of the property that they?
But I, I think that we disagree as far as pervious area being a big difference of whether or not it's vegetated with trees. Where if, I don't know, whereas if they still left enough pervious area around that, it definitely would take it.
Yeah, there's no pervious area, period, you'd have to go down and look at the site line. There's no pervious area, period, every inch of that property is Q-pack, all compacted with a big compactor.
I've seen it.
All right, I mean, it's, they think they beautified the lot according to Josh, they're making it look better, no, they, and, and I'm just, you know, I just feel bad for your brothers.
That's your opinion.
That's your opinion. We can't get into the back and forth, it's gotta come through the chairman, please.
You know, what about the people on, I mean, there's no butters notices or anything for this, I mean, people on Eldana, I feel bad for them, they, they all of a sudden, they're open right up to the train, to, to Liddell's parking area now.
I think that's a condition where that, that's the, the freedom of the property owner, where, you know, they own it. They are free to do those things.
But you know, when it's industrial zone though, it.
That almost gives them more.
Stormwater discharge and industrial dip in the residential.
I don't know if there's any law on taking trees down on your own lot.
No, you can clean and clear all the trees you want.
Right.
There's no bylaw for that.
Right, and that's kind of where I would go with that, like, I feel bad that you live near that, and you have, honestly, but at the same time, you live near it. But I have a, I don't think that people should be hindered from taking down trees on their lot. Seems to be a little trend that's happening all over town.
It's not so much the trees, it's just the water, where's the water going at, in fact, I even talking to highway surveyor, he's concerned about where the water's going. Chapter 144 on soil removal. They took way more material out of there than you're allowed without a permit for stats.
I think, Mr. Liddell, can you tell us, can you, can you speak to that?
Yeah, I, I don't know where these, the numbers are coming from, we, it was not even over a thousand yards, I know, I know it wasn't. So numbers are being thrown around that aren't accurate.
Okay, and what about soil removing?
It was well more than a thousand, yes, I watched them, a six yard load and load triaxes for over two and a half days. And you know, you know, they, Landis hauled it all out of there to their yard, they must have a record on how much they hauled up, it was well over a thousand yards. They originally told, they originally told Landis they're gonna haul 500 up, but it turned out to be way more than that.
No, it wasn't.
From Landis.
All right, again, unfortunately, I do think that's kind of how to, like, purview of this.
But see, so nothing has, nothing can be done, you know, the stormwater doesn't come into a play here, Mike?
Typically, on these, I like to, especially when we're dealing with existing conditions in previous buildings, I have traditionally not always imposed a full, imposed everything, depending on the impact, the changes, a lot of times, I, I do like to see the use of, of property. So when things go from not being used to being used, I tend to be more considerate for those things. I think it's better for the town that this property does get used.
Agreed.
And what we gotta remember is we're looking at the site plan, so that's, that's the purview in which we're looking at it.
How come they don't have a topo in two foot intervals, how can the topo stop where it is?
Like, I see it going back pretty far, I would assume that there's not a gradient change between them, but unless it was deemed, unless it was deemed that it was outside of the impact of the work. Where I, I would say that at that point, you're well over 150 feet to the last, the last line, so. I could, I could see where, you could say that there is no impact of the proposed paving, you know, more than 300 feet.
I thought the 100 feet would be on the lot lines, not just the work area. It's 100 feet past the lot lines, plus, including the whole lot. Because right where they, right where that, that 76 topo line stops, that's where the grade really gets more severe. It's, it's definitely not flat, the rest of the property.
Yeah, again, but how the front would impact the back, you're saying it goes up off of 36?
Oh yeah, everything pitches right to 36.
Yeah, so like, that's what I'm saying, so you're clearly, like, I.
Have you seen, have you seen the placement?
No, but you gotta understand that I can't be concerned with water shedding from the pavement back that way. Like, I think that they have proven that the water will not go that way, so that's, you see what I'm saying?
They've proven the water, they've proven the water can't go down the Route 36, that would be his man?
No, they've proven that it's not going to travel southeasterly along the tracks, it's not gonna, you, you can see from the grades that it's going uphill. So they've proven that the water would not shed that way, and I think that was the intent.
What about all the slopes in the train that are all unstabilized now? I mean, that, that's okay with the tee, that everything just keeps washing down into their drainage ditch?
Again, I don't see how, how the water's going there now.
Well, how can you tell that, there's no topo lines?
You can see to the northeast of the building.
You know, you're gonna have a site visit, that's, you know, you gotta see the site, I mean, you can't look at this plan and determine.
I don't know, I've been doing that for a long time.
All right, anybody else from the audience have anything to say? Raise their hand. What's that?
This is Josh Liddell. So, I mean, the, the site plan review was supposed to be for the, to move forward with the addition. So I, that's what I thought we were here to talk about, I mean, I know there's other, people have other interests, I guess, which is fine to talk about. But at this point, are we able to move forward with the addition?
Well, the, the thing is, is that the proposal is for the addition and the parking. That's what, that's what brings the, the water management into play.
The, the front where the parking area is and the side, those, those, none, nothing's changed there. There was a lot of tree clearing, obviously, I mean, it's, it's not, it's, it's, there's no secret, if.
It doesn't look like there's any grade change proposed, which leads me to believe it will act in the same way it did if it's currently hard pack to begin with.
And I believe what Mike is saying is, everything from the building forward is going to be the same, correct?
Yes. Yep.
Even behind the building a little bit, it's all the same, correct?
A lot of it is, yes.
I mean, like, to the, to the jog, let's call it, hey, it's an L like Liddell.
Yes.
Like, back to the, sorry.
That's good, yes.
Well, if it didn't change all the way back to there, I don't see how it would change any of the stormwater hitting the street.
Anybody else have anything to bring before?
As I said, I was talking to the highway surveyor, and he's concerned about where the water's gonna go.
Is he here?
No, he's not here, he said he's gonna send a note to Joanne, so.
Okay. When did we receive the site plan? It was filed on May 13th? So what happened is, Josh, this gets sent out to all the boards. And we have to wait the 30 days to get the responses back from the other boards. And if we get a response back, then we have to make that a consideration in approving or denying or setting.
Voting on whether or not.
Positions on there. So. At this time, I, I don't see that we could take any action on this tonight, we'd have to move this to our next meeting.
If I could suggest, in the meantime, I would like to see that general note number seven changed.
I was gonna say the same.
That's something that can be taken care of, Josh?
Yes, absolutely.
Could I say anything?
Pardon?
Uh, can I speak?
Um. Yeah.
I mean, is it possible to do a site visit just so we can see what I'm talking about? Is anybody, has any one of you seen?
Yeah, like, well, that's part of the thing is like, I mean, it's on thirty-six. I think we're all familiar with it and if you don't.
Not since they bought. I mean, like, you might be familiar with it before they bought it, which is totally, totally changed now.
Driven by it several times.
What I could say is um, you know, before our next meeting, we could, we could take a ride by.
I certainly will.
Unless you wanted to schedule a site visit, but.
Well, and given time to get back from boards and anyone in town, we can see if there is a, any issues with what's existing.
Yep. So as far as any questions going forth, it would be um, we'll go out, take a look at it, wait for the comments from the other boards and we'll put it on the agenda for the, for the next meeting.
June seventeenth.
June seventeenth?
Correct. Do we have anything on the schedule? Is Joanne with us? Nope. Um. I guess we'll have to get back to you on Monday or Tuesday with what time? On June seventeenth.
Okay.
Sorry.
I would say um, we could put it down for seven thirty if you want, that way you know.
Okay.
All right. All right.
Um, just. Uh, Josh, is it all right if uh, if any time I get a chance, we can just swing in there and take a look?
Yeah, just um, I mean, I, yeah, if, if you, do you need my contact information or my, you can give me a call, I can meet you down there. That's fine.
Yeah, I was just gonna try to like swing by when I had a minute, as long as that's okay with you. I didn't know if there was any particular time that I should or should not, but.
No.
As long as it's fine with you, I'll probably swing by some afternoon.
No, I mean, like, like everybody, I mean, it's, there's, there's really nothing to hide over there. And you know, if, if, I guess, if, if, you know, if we're doing. Something wrong, then just, just tell us and we'll make it right. So I don't think that, I mean, I. We just wanted to put an addition up. We filed a permit for the addition. Um, obviously people have other agendas, which I, I guess I understand. Um. But we're not trying to, you know, do anything crazy over there. I, 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 I guess, you know. We're, we're trying to dress the place up, make it look good compared to what it was before. Um, which I think we've achieved that. So we just wanna kind of move forward with what we started. Um, and we, we understand, I mean, I'm learning a little bit every time I get on one of these calls and going through the process. So I'm not an expert by any means. I'm not pretending to be. So if there's anything that we need to do, just tell me. We've been very accommodating. Um. And we, we're just trying to do the right thing, so.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I just wanted to give you a heads up that, that some point, I'm probably gonna swing by just to give it a look.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, cool. Thanks.
Yep.
And, and another note is the uh, the next meeting that we have will be in person at the town hall.
Okay.
Okay. And we'll uh, send you notice of that.
Okay. Thank everybody. Thank you for your time. Yeah, thank you.
Matt.
Good luck.
Okay. Next, we have uh Flower and Soul. Rick, you back on?
Yeah, yeah.
So seven thirty-three, seven thirty-three, Rick is back in. Okay, we have. Do we have uh Brian Wall with us?
Yes, we do. Yes, the chairman.
Okay. You guys wanna bring us up to speed on your. Your plan for the site plan?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Adam Braylar here uh from Prince Lavelle on behalf of Brian Wall and Flower and Soul. We're, this is the, uh, we're certainly um ready and able to provide you with uh. An update of the site plan, which we submitted to the town, I think on Tuesday. Um, but just for um. I guess procedural purposes, this is the, this is the, a, um, the clo, the. Hearing for the, the special permit that was closed. Is, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so just.
No, uh, wait a minute. Have I got it wrong here? I'm sorry.
I believe the special permit is first.
The site plan's second, yeah. So this would be the special permit. And basically at this time, we've closed that hearing. So this is more about the discussion for uh. For the board. And um. To deliberate over. Any, all the information that we've gathered so far, so forth. So open it up to the members of the board.
Okay, I noticed that there was some correspondence um between the concerned resident and Mr. Wall. It looked like they tried to meet up unsuccessfully.
But is, isn't that for the site plan?
I believe you had comments on both.
Did you see what page that was now?
Yeah, eight. And. Nine, uh, I'm sorry. Nine and ten. And eleven. So it looks like we have.
I'm, I'm seeing everything to do with a site plan. I don't really see anything to do with the.
Special permit.
Or some wrong.
That was the only information I saw.
Yeah, so I, I think all of that was um in reference to the landscaping for the site plan. So I mean, I would open it for any discussion on the. Special permit. There's no discussion on the special permit, son?
I don't know. I think we've gone over everything. I'm just checking my notes from last meeting to make sure I didn't leave anything out.
Okay. Is everybody pretty well um satisfied with traffic that we're concerned about the special permit and so forth?
Yeah, I thought the traffic report was excellent.
Rick, did you have anything?
Yeah, it seems like everything uh we've talked about has been addressed. Uh, I think it looks pretty good, my opinion.
Okay.
I don't see anything in my uh notes that's left undone. I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for Flower and Soul. Um, do I need to read the whole special permit um notice or anything like that?
Um, yeah, I mean, you could read that. And the only other thing I would ask is um, are there gonna be any conditions added? Did anybody have any conditions? Rick?
No, I have nothing.
Mark?
No, I do not.
Okay. Then I'll open the floor to you, Amy.
Make a motion to approve the um Flower and Soul uh Inc. application. From Brian Wall and owner Buddy Miles to be located in units two and three at eight nine four Plymouth Street, Halifax, Massachusetts, zero two three three eight. As shown on Assessor's map, fifty-eight lot four dash zero dash R. Recorded in book four, six, five, nine, one, page one, three, three in the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds. To obtain a special permit as defined under Halifax zoning by law sections one, six, seven dash three. And one, six, seven dash seven. Schedule of use regulations, specific use regulations for marijuana establishment. Excuse me, establishment. And um, the applicant is seeking to operate the marijuana dispensary and establishment in unit two. Nine hundred square feet for retail and three, unit three for storage and an employee area. There will be twenty-six customer parking spots and five employee spaces. And the area is business zoned. Um. As can, as, as talked about and discussed in our meetings.
Was, was there anything about the um hours of operation?
Not in that, but let me look and I can add that on. One second. The hours of operation were. Sorry, one second. I'm looking for it. I feel like it was. Does anybody know what page that was on? Brian, anybody?
I am looking right now, sure enough.
Thank you. I am too. I was thinking, two eyes are better than one.
Brian, did you have that?
Um. So it's in, we're, we're, this is Adam Braylar.
Right.
Uh, so it, it is in the bylaw uh under section uh fifteen um dash. Where'd it go? Dash two, that would be from eight to eight.
Could you say that again?
That would be eight, eight.
Eight, eight.
Yep, eight, 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 I'm sorry, hours of operation, yeah, from eight, eight o'clock to eight o'clock.
Okay.
And we would conform to the, to the requirement from that bylaw.
Okay.
Okay, um, so I will note one, one sixty-seven fifteen two. I just wanna see it for myself before I continue forward. You sure it was fifteen? Seventeen, it must be. That's what. Let me go back. All activities included in such uses, including but not limited to parking, toilet, storage and infrastructure for attendees shall be a minimum of one hundred feet. All right.
Did you find it?
There it is. Got it. It's just for the record, it's one sixty-seven dash seven fourteen dash two. And it says the hours of operation of medical marijuana treatment center may be set by planning board, but at no time. Shall the facilities be open between the hours of eight PM and eight AM.
Okay, so you just put in that they're gonna conform with the bylaw, that section?
Can, uh, conform with the bylaw. For marijuana and, which is one sixty-seven, seven, fourteen, all parts. And along with our, our um discussions and anything we've planned.
So I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Who's that, Rick?
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor? And I'll do a roll call. Rick?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Gordon, yes. All right, so. That concludes the. The special permit. And. Seven forty-five, we'll continue the hearing on the site plan for eight ninety-four at this time. Okay, so now at this time. Um, Adam, do you, did you wanna go over the site plan that we got? We all got copies of that, so.
Great. Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you again. Uh, members of board, Adam Braylar for the app. Brian Wall and Flower and Soul. Do have um same, same folks we had uh on the last hearing with, with us, so. I've got Brian here and Brendan McKee, as well as um Corinne and Joe, um Joe Webby. Uh, for any questions that the board uh may have. Um, so if I can share my screen, that would be great. We can, I can go over the. If I'm allowed to.
So the, the plan that we have is um. Uh, dated six, four, twenty twenty-one. And the last vision date is five, twenty-seven, twenty-one. So we're all in the same, well, same plan, correct?
Right, that's, yeah, so we can walk you through that.
Yeah.
Um, if Joe, if you, if you wouldn't mind just um providing the board with a quick kind of. Summary of the additions that we made in connection with the uh landscaping uh and the signs, that would be helpful.
Uh, yes, Joe Webby, Webby Engineering. And at the last hearing, the board had asked us to incorporate. Uh, the site, uh, the great, excuse me, the landscaping plan into our site plans. As well as a sign plan and a lighting plan. Uh, we were given the lighting. We were given the lighting plans from Holbrook Associates. We incorporated those lighting plans as sheets five and six on our plans. And the landscaping and the sign proposed sign are shown on sheet four of our plans. Everything else has remained basically the same.
So I see the, the free standing sign to be located ten feet from the front lot line to the westly side of the driveway, correct?
That's correct.
We're back far enough, so that's not going to interfere with line of sight, right?
That's correct. That'll be up on a little, it's quite a slope right there, Gordon. So it'll be up on the upper level, where the cars will be down at a low, you know, sloping down.
Yep. And the lighting plan shows the, the effects of the lights not extended beyond the property, is that correct?
That's, that's correct. The sheet five, it, it came out a little dark. Hopefully you, you got the ones I didn't color. Those show the, the lumens and as it decreases as it gets to the property line to zero.
Okay. Everybody following that?
That's a pretty cool, that's a pretty cool application.
And then the landscape plan.
Sheet, sheet four on the upper right-hand side, there's a planting schedule that goes along with the the legend for the types of plants that are going to be planted.
Nice touch with the pair.
Hey, anybody on the board have any comments on that? Questions?
We don't.
Everything looks well addressed.
They don't.
All right, I would open it up to questions from the audience. If anybody had any? If you'd raise their hand.
Chris Winogas has his hand up.
I had a question, because we can't see the plans, but there were a few emails going back and forth where they would go plant the trees.
Yep.
A butter to our house.
I'll see if I can share it, Chris.
I believe Joanne, too, had the emails between me and Brian Wall.
One second, and I'll have it on the screen. All right, I'm going to share a screen. Do you want me to zoom it in?
Yeah, zoom it a little bit.
How's that look, Chris?
Yeah, well, I didn't know if Brian Wall wanted to speak. Are we go still playing on what was discussed in the emails, or?
Well, why, why don't you voice your your concerns and then I'll go to him.
Mr. Chairman, I had sent pictures shown out for most, over half the year. My house is fully exposed
Yep.
to the building, and he had proposed putting some trees between us and him.
Are you about thirty feet higher than that?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah.
So, I mean, my, my question is, are, are you considering that they need to plant trees that are big enough that are going to stop you from seeing their building?
Uh, he proposed putting them in another location.
Putting them where?
Like along our property edge, just to stop the view.
Putting them on your property?
Yes.
I don't know, we, we could reach out to Brian, but I'm, I'm kind of struggling with this idea that, I mean, you can see the building, but you're way up above it, so. I, I don't, I don't understand that it would be his obligation to put trees high enough to block a view when you're looking down on it. I, I don't think it's really within the purview of the planning board to make somebody do that. And to plant them on your property, I don't think that's something that would be something that would come under our purview as well. But I'll reach out to Mr. Wall and see what he has to say.
Yeah, I agree. Like, you guys can certainly agree on something as far as the placement on your property.
I don't know.
Mr. Wall there?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're, we're, as we've said before, we're happy to work with Mr. Winogas. When, I'm going to call him Chris, so I don't totally butcher his last name, so I apologize. We're, we are open to working with him on, you know, a resolution to help him appease some of those views. You know, as Mr. Webby told us, you know, with the drainage basin, we're not allowed, you know, we just wouldn't be able to put anything, and nothing would get that high to help help Chris avoid seeing our building. So we're definitely open to working with him around that, you know, where it's reasonable. I think we offered up three green giant trees that grow forty feet high and twenty feet wide on the side of his property to help alleviate that. And we would, we'd be happy to continue to work with Chris regarding that.
Okay. But, but my, my thing is, if you're planting on his property, it would be outside of the planning board's purview. That's something you guys have to.
Yeah.
That's right, Mr. Chairman. This is Adam Braylar again. That was, I'm glad you brought that up earlier on, too. There is a procedural concern there. But just for the, for the record, Flower and Soul and Brian just want, wanted the board to know that we are working with, with Chris to try to address his concerns.
Okay. Okay, is there any? Anybody else in the audience? I don't see anybody raising their hand.
Mr. Chairman, this one, once again, one twenty-nine Circuit Street.
Yep.
Previously, in the site plan, it was discussed that they wouldn't they would only use their parking spaces. I'm just concerned about the traffic still with the site plan.
Oh, yeah, as far as the designation for the other units as well?
Yes. Help control the amount of traffic.
Yeah, like you say, knowing that the other two units are currently occupied by low-traffic businesses, we, we've kind of secured that. And if there were to be a change that's proposed, that, that's when that, we would be able to act, and we may have to deny them something further in the future based off of the current usage for Flower and Soul.
Okay, thank you.
So not seeing anything else. Adam, Brian, did you have anything else to add?
Uh, no, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, members of the board?
No, I'd be ready to make a motion to accept the site plan as it is set on the May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one revisions for Flower and Soul at eight ninety-four Plymouth Street in Halifax.
Okay, are there any conditions?
That they remain with good faith in the parking and...
Well, I mean, they have to abide by the plan, yeah.
And follow all of the Halifax bylaws.
Okay. They have a motion, is there a second?
I will second.
All right, do a roll call vote. Rick?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Gordon, yes. Okay. I would just offer good luck to you guys. Look forward to seeing the plan get executed.
And I just wanted to thank the board, the police chief for all his help in, in guiding us, and we look forward to working with everyone and the neighborhood and Chris in making this a, a great business for the town and being good neighbors.
Okay.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on.
So we'll have to get into the office next week and sign that, correct?
Yes. See if we can get in the beginning of the week and sign the decision. The next item we have is Zero Mont Ponce Street, a letter from the fire chief. Appears that there should be a site plan before the planning board, and there is not. And there's also a letter from the building commissioner.
Page twelve and thirteen.
Yeah. And then I believe there was another email that we got today.
I'll look for it.
And we can welcome Brendan in.
Hi, Brendan.
Hey, guys, how we doing? Thanks for your patience. Uh, I came on just before the vote, but that's okay. We obviously have quorum, so.
Okay. So note Brendan's in at eight o'clock.
Got it. I did. Um, how do you want me to do this? You want me to read the letters? You want me to put them on?
Yeah, you could read.
A screen share, too, hold on.
Okay.
Just give me a second. So I guess I will start with the first one, which would be April first.
I can't trust a letter on April first.
Cute. For the board, it is on page thirteen. So it's from the Town of Halifax Building Commissioner on April first, twenty twenty-one to Amanda Monte of CNA Realty, P O Box five six two, Hanson, Massachusetts, zero two three four one, to whom it may concern. On March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, this officer, the fire chief, and Kathy Evans, as a representative of the Conservation Commission, made a site visit with your permission at Zero Mont Ponce Street, Assessor's Map ninety-five lot nine. During that visit, it was determined by this officer, for zoning purposes only, a light industrial use was occurring involving storage and processing of stumps, logs, dirt, wood waste, and some machinery. At Zero Mont Ponce Street, Assessor's Map ninety-five lot nine, is partially located in the I Industrial Zone District under one sixty-seven dash seven C Table of Use Regulations. This would be an allowed as of right use, as long as it remained within the confines of the Industrial Zone District and the definition of light industrial use under chapter one sixty-seven dash three, which is definitions. At this time and within sixty days of this notice, it is necessary for you to apply for a site plan review with the planning board so accurate boundaries, information, and determinations can be made by this office in order to determine zoning compliance. If you wish to pursue this matter under chapter one sixty-seven dash twenty-one, you may, one, appeal the building inspector's decision by filing an appeal to the zoning board of appeals within thirty days of that decision, or, two, apply for a variance and, and/or a special permit from zoning board of appeals. Applications are available from the regulatory board, secretary, or the town clerk's office. Sincerely, Rob Pichirilli, Building Inspector, Zoning Enforcement Officer. He CC'd the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health, the Fire Chief, the Planning Board, and the Zoning Board of Appeals.
And then we had a letter from Zero Mont Ponce Street.
Oh, okay. So I was looking at the May 26th from the fire department.
Okay, March or?
Uh, it says, May 26, 2021, from the fire department. To Amanda Monte, P O Box 562, Hanson. Dear Ms. Monte, this letter is to follow up on our conversation on May 26, 2021, regarding the storage of forestry products on your property located at Zero Mon Ponsett Street, Halifax Assessors Map 95 Lot 9. As discussed, I have not received a copy of your proposed site plan, nor have you filed for site plan review with the planning board. This was required per a letter from the zoning enforcement, excuse me, zoning enforcement officer dated April 1st, 2021, following our site visit on March 26, 2021. While it is my understanding that you are requesting a 30-day extension, at this time, I am ordering that no additional forestry products be brought onto the property until a site plan is approved by the planning board and this office. Please contact me if you have any questions. Jason Viveros, Chief of the Department. He CC'd the Board of Selectmen, the Building Inspector, the ZDA, and the Planning Board. And then the one from today.
This one from May 27, too.
Oh. Okay, I don't see that one. One second. I have one here from May 27, which is, okay. Received on May 27, 2021 at 1:34, 38 PM. Amanda Monte, trustee, CNA Realty Trust, to the Town of Halifax Building Commissioner. Dear Building Commissioner, I received your letter dated April 1st. At this time, I am asking for an extension of 60 days to apply for site plan review with the planning board for the property located at Zero Mon Ponsett Street. I have been working diligently with the engineers to produce, produce plans and information for the planning board to review. However, we need additional time.
Man, the other one, I believe, was June 1st.
Is that in our packet?
No, in the email. It came, came to us 11:33 today.
One second. Oh. Okay, one second. From the office of the Building Commissioner on June 1st, 2021, to Amanda Monte, CCing the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board, subject, extend time for site plan review application. This office has received a request dated May 27, 2021, from Amanda Monte, requesting an extension of 60 days to apply for site plan review with the planning board for the location of Zero Mon Ponsett Street. As stated in the request, the app has been working diligently with the engineers to produce the plans and information needed for review. I accept this request and hereby extend the time in addition 60 days from the original 60 days to apply to the planning board for site plan review of Zero Mon Ponsett Street. If you have any questions regarding this matter, please feel to contact this office. Thank you for your assistance in this matter. Robert Pitcherily, Building Commissioner.
Any discussion?
Isn't this the Mesa site?
I don't know what that is.
Massachusetts and Dean Heath species?
I believe so. I, I have a question. It's been determined by the zoning officer that they need a site plan to operate there. My question is, how does the zoning officer supersede our powers of doing a site plan by allowing them to operate without a site plan? And I would like to, I'm going to contact the Town Council and ask where he gets the authority to do that. First, I would send a letter, like to send a letter to the zoning officer and ask an explanation of exactly how this happens. Because everybody else that wants to do business in town has to come before the planning board for a site plan before they can operate. You know, we have people that want to open a store, they have to come before us. We just did a site plan. I don't understand how he gets to allow somebody to do something while they're trying to do a site plan. So my question is, where does the authority come from to allow somebody to operate without the site plan?
I think that might be, I think that might be a good idea to find out that information.
Yeah, I see where you're going with that. Like normally, if you didn't, if you needed one and didn't have one, you wouldn't be able to do anything with the property?
Right.
Like a cease and desist?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, it's kind of a new situation, but, uh, yeah.
And you would, you would think if there was a cease and desist, then it would create a little bit more urgency than the two-month window for them to get their site planned together and the engineers onboard and, and then to, to be in front of us, you know? And they, they have a chance every two weeks to get in front of us. But if you have 60 days to somebody, you're going to need your permission, and it wasn't the planning board, then you can't kind of drag your feet and take your time.
Yeah, and I believe this would be the second 60 days. All right, I would motion to put a letter to the zoning enforcement agent and ask him where the authority comes from and check with the Town Council.
The motion.
Sorry, I was just, I was just going to ask a question and to anybody on the planning board that if, if for whatever reason there wasn't the proper authority to grant that, what's the next step there? Are we the ones that issue a cease and desist, or is he?
He is.
Yeah, well, he, that's, that's the thing where he is zoning enforcement officer. I assume, it seems weird, but I assume that's the authority, right?
He's the enforcement.
According to him, it meets zoning, what it's, what they're doing then meets the zoning that it's in.
You need a site plan.
Now, there's other, I mean, wow, there's other companies running in town without a proper site plan yet too, so I don't know. Give them the other 60 days, see if they come up with it. I don't know, you know, it's probably not that easy getting this done, I would imagine.
Well, that's what slows business down from coming into town is they have to get a site plan before they can start. Like Alan had said, when he was on there, everybody has to get a site plan. So.
I, I agree with that.
I mean, especially because the, it was, what was that original letter from the chief of police that was, that was there after reviewing the site? And agreed that there needed to be a, a site plan in place as well?
The fire chief.
Yeah, the fire chief, yeah, so. So if he, if he's saying that he needs one, that they need one, then that's definitely, I would assume so.
Especially with the letters that have been going on to Carver Street, Industrial Drive. I would think, I don't know why we're not being consistent.
I, I, I agree, and, and I don't like the idea of someone starting, starting a use and then going for the permit after. The only thing I, I'm like hesitant on is, is we know that as far as asking the attorney, like what authority, I think we already know the answer to that. So I see the only logical question would be asking him whether or not he can. Right? Like, I mean, even asking him, he's doing it because he is enforcement officer. But is your question of whether or not he can? Like, what are we asking the attorney?
My question is, he's determined in his letter that they need a site plan.
Yeah.
The site plan comes from the planning board. He, when somebody comes to town and they go to the building inspector and they ask about doing a bu, a business in this town, just like we just got through with Flower and Soul. They have to come to this board, present the site plan before they can start their business.
Yeah, agree.
Somebody has started a business and now he's, he's telling them, you can continue, I'm going to give you 60 days to do that. I mean, it's like, what, what is, why did Flower and Soul have to come to us?
Well, but that's what I'm saying. So we're not asking, we're not, you said that you wanted to ask the attorney by what authority he used, and he used his authority as enforcement officer, right? So like, I'm just wondering if we're trying to challenge his opinion. Because it sounds like that's what we're doing, because there's no question of whether or not he did it. And I'm just wondering if we're just trying to.
I can see your point, I can see your point, Mark.
Right, you know, like kind of skipping a step here.
But the question is, we have the authority to give the site plan. So who has the authority to supersede us and allow somebody to do something without getting the site plan approved from us? That's my question.
And I can see that, too.
I have, I have a question.
He is, wait, he is the enforcement officer, so when we, when we approve a site plan and somebody's not following through, he's the enforcement officer. But I don't see anywhere where he has the authority to say, you need a site plan, but I'm going to let you do things without it.
So that's what I'm saying. Yes, but, but you don't need a question there. It sounds like what you, like, it, it sounds like you want to go forward and say that he does not. So like, I, I don't see why asking whether or not he did or what authority. See where I'm getting at? Like, you're, I think you're asking a question you know the answer to.
I, I don't know, I mean, he is the authority for enforcement.
Yeah.
So once, once you determine that somebody needs something, how do you then determine, okay, you don't need it to do what you're doing, but, but you do need it, but I'll give you 60 days, you know?
I agree, it sounds weird.
Well, because there's been no application, there's been nothing.
Yeah, no, no, I, I'm totally in agreement with that. I'm just wondering if we're wasting an expensive question. Are we asking the correct question?
I, I hear you. So why, wait a minute, I have, I have a question. So isn't it not following the Halifax bylaws to not go along with 167-28 and all other Halifax bylaws? And therefore, an enforcement agent would have to go in following the bylaws of the town? So why isn't he following the bylaws of the town would be my question.
All right, yeah, see, again, like I, I agree with that. I agree that the situation's whack. I just want to make sure that we're asking the right question and not.
I have, I have a question if it would, you know, I mean, for the last year, I've, I've heard all about Fled's Tree, they're operating without a proper site plan. So is it shut down too by the?
Rick, Rick, excuse me, excuse me. If you're not going to Fled's, I have to recuse myself.
All right.
So.
It was just, you know, I just asked him, they're not shut down yet, they're still operating without a proper site plan, so how do you just give them the other, give them the other 60 days and see what happens? That's, that's my opinion, well.
Well, if you want to talk about that.
Yeah, but you can't because it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
So I think, I think after, after listening to everybody, obviously, I think that the, the question is not, did he operate outside of his jurisdiction or, or did he give them 60 days twice when, after requesting a site plan? So I guess now the proper question to go back to him is to say that doesn't fall within the bylaws, so therefore it's appropriate to issue a cease and desist until they provide the planning board, correct? I think that may be more of a proper procedure. Unless he comes back and says, no, they don't need to because this is why, but.
I would agree.
I think, I think everybody's right. That's the weird part. To, to Mark's point, this is just a really weird situation. So it's more of, hey, that doesn't follow the actual rules. You didn't have the right to extend an extra 60 days on top of the original 60 days. So therefore, the proper protocol is to issue a cease and desist until they provide us with what you told them they needed to, so do that.
Agreed. You want to make that a motion?
I would make it a motion that we go back to the zoning enforcement officer that provided an extra 60 day and tell them that that doesn't fall within the regulations of what, the stipulations that they originally laid out in their original letter and that they issue a cease and desist until the people on property show the planning board the site agreement or the site plan that was originally requested from them.
Mr. Chairman, this is Kled Ferreira. Can I say something? Why Rick mentioned my name, my business? Can I say something, please? I'm sick and tired to hear my name on all these meetings.
Wait a minute. I'm going to recuse myself and Amy will have to take over.
8:28 PM.
So I've been following this meeting since November 20th, the last year. And I've been sickened to hear my name on all these meetings because if, Rick, it was not on the border since 2016. If you go back to 2016, Mark Millius, it was on the border since then. And I have all my approves from the planning board to run my business over there. So I want to, them, I want the planning board to prove that I have no planning sense. They gave me the approval to run my business there. What is going on over there? Mark Millius, he was on the planning board back then. I have all my approvals then.
Kled, I actually motioned on as well in July of 2019.
So I've been, been, been accused to falsify a plans that the planning board told me to do what I did. So I am sick to hear my name go to the mud. My business, my reputation. Are you guys not getting ashamed from that?
Kled, this is Mark, and yes, I, I agree, you have a site plan, you've been before us. Unfortunately, your, your name has got brought up a bunch of times. Sometimes, a, a lot of times, it happens to show an example of, of another project. And I don't believe or think that it should ever be used negatively against you. Anytime that, you know, I've ever tried to bring it up is it's, as an example of a, of a property and the way things are handled. I agree that, you know, nothing personal should ever be brought up. And I do apologize for that.
No, it wasn't you. It was Rick, and you do know.
You know, Kled, it was nothing personal against you. You know, Claude, it was nothing personal against you. All right.
You do know because you've been on the border from long, long time. Because I remember in two thousand sixteen, you was there. And you was part of the members that voted for me to get my.
Okay, we need to like go through me and like, but I I will allow the conversation between Mark and Claude for an a- for now, but let's not get all group. You know, like, let's stay with that and then we'll move on. Claude, go ahead with Mark. Mark, are you, are you good?
No, I I the only thing aim is because they've been telling on every meetings that come up with my name. That I don't have my site plan approved. And Mark is approved that I do have because he's the one. Gave the approve. He's the one of the members that signed up for my approve. Is that right, Mark?
I agree, hundred percent.
Exactly. So why is this going back and forth on every meeting that come up my name that I don't have my approve? And bringing my name, my business to the mud?
I don't, Claude, I don't know, but on January seventh of this year, twenty twenty-one, I did stick up for you when something was stated. Because I do remember sign it signing off on a site plan. Or actually, we actually voted that we approved your site plan and need to sign it still, and that's the issue.
Well, but then.
Yeah, I just, I hope, Claude, I I hope you do know. But uh, of all the times, like, I do understand that your name gets brought up. I'm totally hearing you on that. Um, I just hope you know that that does not reflect the board as a whole or the opinion, if you know what I'm saying.
I appreciate that, Mark, but the thing is because they keep and say that I don't have my approve. I do have my approve. What it's going on? Just go back on two thousand sixteen, two thousand eighteen, whatever was. All the meetings that I did, every single step that I did for my property, even when I bought my, when I bought the property. Because when I first moved in, I used to rent the property from Peter Furys. And then, when I bought my property, I bought the two lands, the two lots, okay? So I went to the planning board to allowed me to put a, I believe it was a a fuel tank. And I also say, I told to the planning board that I was gonna move my fence also on both lot. Because I own boats now. I own the the two lots over there. So everything that I did on that land, like every step that I did over there, I got a permit for, I got the approval for. Before I moved in, I got the approval to run my business out of that place. That's what I wanted.
Amy, can I jump in here for a second? Uh, Claude, so this is Brendan Elliott. I'm uh, I'm obviously the newest member of the planning board. Um, after hearing you and and the other members of the board, um, you know, saying or or attesting that all of your stuff is approved. Then I I I think it's um, the board's responsibility to never bring your property or business up again. In these conversations. As far as I'm concerned, if you're, if you, if this board has approved you and your site plans, then we shouldn't be discussing it.
I appreciate that because the only thing that I want to bring up, bring it over to this planning board. Is because on two thousand sixteen, I believe that's when I first applied.
Yeah, and so we'll, so we'll have, we'll have, we'll have had record of that. And so therefore, you know, um, because we have record of that. Then obviously, it shouldn't be brought up again. Unless there are further moves that you decide to bring in front of the planning board. But as far as that's concerned, again, the newest mem- I'm newer, so, you know. Take that for what it's worth. But at the same time, your your frustration has been heard and it's the responsibility of the board to make sure that we also do our job. Um, for you as as a resident. So um, I hope that suffice for for you. So that we can move on with the the other topic that we're in discussion.
Yeah, no, I don't want to. Yeah.
I would like to um, share a screen to help this out. Just give me a second, please.
Oh, shoot, are Amy or Miss Chairman, are we um, Vice Chairman? Are we uh, are we tabling the motion that was made for the action on zero Monpont? Because we kind of jumped into a whole nother topic.
I know, and I, and then we changed on who was running the meeting and all kinds of stuff like that. So. Yeah, tabling that for a second, thank you. So there's actually um, three letters um, that I could show you. That will show that um, Claude has site plan approval. And you mentioned two thousand and sixteen, is that correct?
Yep.
There is one. And that was when Mr. Fiore owned it? Is that correct?
Yep.
And then. We have one from. Two thousand and I nineteen, one second. And we actually have a certificate of site plan approval from two thousand and eighteen as well. One second.
So Claude, it's Claude, it seems to be my understanding that it was, it's it's your um, feelings that your name keeps getting brought up multiple times. And and accusing that you don't have a site plan. And I think Amy is proving that you do. So I think it's the responsibility of our board not to bring. Uh, your name up again, whether it's an example or in reference to. Would that, would that satisfy, um, you know, what what you're looking for?
It does, part of, and I've been accused in front of this border from a ex-chairman. On this border, Alan Diaz, that I falsified a plan. That I never did it. So I just want to make it clear that is.
Yeah.
My reputation has been damaged by this planning board.
Well.
But just so that, you know, I hear the crap, but it doesn't change my opinion of you, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, it wasn't the planning board that shut him down, it was the fire chief. Because it had a fire.
Fire chief's never shut me down.
Well, it didn't shut you down, but, you know, you know, we have to talk about, I've been hearing about this for the last year. I mean, there's nothing against you personally. I was just bringing up a site plan. We're talking about site plan. So I just brought up an example, nothing personally against you. Because I don't even know you, Claude. Okay, uh, that's all I was doing, just another example.
You brought that.
They've given you a lot of time to get things straightened out, so.
No, 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 no. You brought up that I didn't have a site plan.
No, I didn't.
You have a site plan and it's been approval. There's there's difference over there. That's the thing.
I, that's exactly it. I agree with you.
And it's been approval. I didn't, I didn't bring my business to the town and I put it there with our site plan. And the site prove a plan. I have the approval.
Claude, I just put those, I just put those on the screen so that the public could see so that's that that we could remedy that situation for you. And um, I definitely apologize and remember trying to stick up for you on numerous events. January seventh, twenty twenty-one, to name one of them. And then the next meeting after that and so forth and so on. And I. Um, I, because I remember specifically um, in July of two thousand and nineteen. Um, voting to approve your last site plan.
Thank you very much.
And Claude, lastly, I hopefully we can wrap this up as well as it's just that, um, you know, your feelings about what a a previous ex-member and chairman. Of this this board um, had done was in the past and he's no longer here. So obviously, we can't fix or change that. But all we can do is is do better for you in the future. So that's what um.
Thank you, sir.
Very nicely said. Okay.
Thank you, all the members.
You're welcome, Claude. All right. Are we going to stop talking about Claude so that we can get back to the motion tabled? Gordon?
Okay.
It's uh, eight thirty-nine.
Okay. So there was a mo- does somebody want to make a motion again on the letters that we received from the. Uh, building commissioner zoning.
Second Brendan um, motion.
Do we still have the motion?
Yeah, uh, Brendan.
To be honest, I'm not really sure how the motion stands at this point.
So I guess the 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 original motion that I made was in order to uh, go to the zoning enforcement officer. And um, request and also make him aware that, you know, providing two sixty-day extensions. When he originally asked for for the person operating a business on that site to provide the planning board with a site plan in order to continue business. Um, the proper protocol wouldn't be to extend another sixty day. It would be to ex- to to provide a cease and desist. Until the planning board was provided that site plan.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion is second. Uh, all in favor, I'll do a roll call vote. Um, Rick?
No.
Mark?
Uh, yes.
Brendan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Gordon, yes. So one against four-four. Okay. Next up, we have um, two complaints from six forty-nine Monpont Street regarding the lighting at Twin Lake Liquors. Six fifty-seven Monpont Street. And I'm gonna recuse myself. I own a property across the street from them. So Amy, if you could take over. That's it.
So we have complaint. Oh, sorry, what time is it? Sorry. Eight forty?
Yeah.
Okay, so uh, we have a few letters which I will do the same as I've done previously. And read them aloud for the public and put them on share screen. So just give me a second to open that up, folks. Do we still have, um, I think it's Nicole and Adam um, on the call?
Yes, we're both here.
Thank you. Glad we didn't lose you. It's been a while.
We're entertaining. I don't know what you're talking about.
Uh, okay, so. Let me just gather my stuff. So we have a few things and I'm just gonna go to the first ones in the meeting packet and then work around. So on um, for members, page fourteen and page fifteen. Sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. Nineteen, hold on, no. So it's fourteen through eighteen. And I'm almost there, so I can share screen and start. Okay. Share screen. Sorry, technical difficulties. All right, I got it. I apologize, sorry. Sorry for the technical difficulties, folks. Okay, so all right, uh, an email to. Joanne Snow from Terry Renaud on Tuesday, June first at ten oh six A M. We have, hi, Joanne, I received the second call today regarding a complaint of the lights at six five seven Monpont Street. Nicole Nelligan at six forty-nine Monpont Street is advising again that the lights are staying on all night. She said after the first complaint, the lights were shut off for a couple of days, but are now on again. I advised that this would be forwarded to the planning board as this is under the planning board's site plan review. Her number is seventy, oh, well, I'm not gonna do that. Okay. And then um, on Wednesday, June second, Nicole wrote in an email. Complaints on Twin Lakes uh, liquor store. Hello, Joanne, I was sent your email from another neighbor having issues with the liquor store. At six fifty-three and six fifty-seven Monpont Street. The lighting is an issue. Complaints have been put in and owner has stated lights will not be on after nine P M. Lights continue to be on all night and shine into two of my bedrooms, back of the building lights. The front light attached to the telephone pole is facing toward my house and needs to be directed away. See the pictures, which I'll get to in a second. There is no upkeep of the property. The weeds are growing through my fence and the trash is up against my fence or blows out when their temporary fence is open. I'm constantly picking up trash from their property and it needs to be addressed ASAP. Again, pictures will be shown of that. Lastly, my lack of privacy is becoming an increasingly um, an increasing issue. With the constant coming and goings from workers, owners, and now hearing that my current fence will have parking spots against it. I am pleading to have the owners install a privacy fence. It can be as high as the building. I really don't care. But I need the eyesore lighting issues and privacy. The store is robbing me of the address. And the next pictures, and they're black and white, so that's the pole. And there's the light at night, which I believe would be the back of the building. And then we have the fence and I believe the trash. Let me see if I can turn that one for you. No. That, so that looks like. The front, that's.
That's just the front of the building. Then this, is there another picture of the back?
No.
No, the the other picture of the back is is a lot worse than the front.
But but this picture is showing the trash. You can see it all above, all against the front, in the front, in the boxes against our property. That's not even including all of the uh, plastic that's blowing up into our trees and into the back um, of the property, which has no fencing.
I did drive by and see the the sofa also against that on the parking lot.
What?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that people just sleep on now.
Is it construction debris?
Yes.
Okay.
But they have a dumpster.
Yeah, and that stuff's just blown around freely.
They have dumps in the back with it behind the building.
As you can see in that picture.
Open now, right?
Well, but as you can see in that picture, that gate's open. Anytime that anyone is in the property, that gate is open. So any trash, if the wind's blowing out, blows it out across the street and back into any of the neighbors' property.
Okay. So um, Mark, you do remember we had talk about this. Um, gosh, I. I guess we're gonna see the date.
Yeah, I remember the.
Before, before you get into anything else, can I also add one more complaint, um, which was brought to my attention today? There are four new lights being installed.
On the side of.
On the side of the building. If you'd like me to walk outside, I can show you two of them because they have not, they have not finished the other two. So there'll be five lights total, two are up. There'll be four of the ones that are currently up. And then there will be another light um, against their sign. So that'll be four additional lights on top of what I'm already dealing with.
Okay.
All right, so I don't recall when we originally approved that plan that was, I'm actually restricting the size of the building. That they were gonna be rehabbing. I don't recall anything as far as lighting.
No.
Definitely an issue where we should be getting, getting the property owner in to address these.
I agree with you because I was gonna state, we do have um, meeting minutes from that time. And hold on, oh, wait a minute, we also have.
Lawrence Colgarity was in this call and he has left. He's representing the building, but he's not the owners.
I'll I'll.
Okay, I believe we dealt with him last time.
Yeah, just just give us a second to talk about a few things and then I'll 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 come back to the public in a minute, okay, honey?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Um, Mr. Patel, the owner of Twin Lakes Liquors called today to address the complaints of the lighting on his property. This is an email um, to the planning board from Joanne Snow. He said that he has turned the lighting to a downward direction so it does not shine onto into neighboring properties. He said that he also added a timer so that lighting shuts off at ten PM. Okay, so I, I, I would probably wonder if he has an electrical permit, um, but to get to what we can handle. May twenty-first, twenty twenty, we discussed it at six forty-five with Lawrence Garrity. So he's, Lawrence Garrity, I'll, I'll try to share screen this too.
Definitely worth just reaching out to him, um, as far as the light leaving the property, that's something that we always look at. Uh, whether or not the lighting that he's putting in now was, you know, it might not have been proposed. It may be something that he's doing as an afterthought, but it's definitely something that we would have some control over and we would be looking and we'd be able to enforce that, that would not leave the property.
Yeah, and so.
Just so you know, that is something that we can do something for you.
Agree, well, I'm, I'm talking right now that we did waive partial, um, the um, site plan on um, May twenty-first, but only for ex, and that was twenty twenty, only for exterior, um, maintenance uh, of the building, residing and things like that, I, I want me to share screen this, and then.
Yeah, I remember, it was like, it was a, it was a limited thing and it was, it was an existing building that they were uh, trying to improve, which is part of the reason that we waived the entire site plan, but that, that doesn't, um, that doesn't free them of certain obligations.
We only waived the site plan, in my opinion, for part, parts of things and that, that they would come back if they were gonna change anything on the exterior and that the, um, the, they were gonna tear down part of the building and then the part that hasn't been a liquor store for the last several years would only be storage. But now we have um, a lot more going on, we have lighting that's affecting the neighbors. I think that we need to ask them for a site plan to, um, because they can't just put, um, parking spots up against the fence and things like that.
Um, I, I believe parking spots were allotted on the plan that we did approve, but I, I think as of right now, um, rather than requiring right off the bat like a, an entire site plan is that, I'd suggest that we, that we get him in here, um, let him know, get his feedback and let him know about, you know, what things he may be limited to, he may be unaware of.
Well, we didn't actually approve any site plans then, we just waived that part of it so that he could fix the outside of it. We didn't see a site plan, there was no, there's not been any parking spots lined up or anything of that nature. We just said there'll be a new roof, he just said there'll be a new roof, new HVAC equipment and interior operations. The board.
Um, no, that, that's not entirely correct, I remember we had discussion about the parking in the front and we were trying to eliminate the spot where, um, I don't know if you remember, but they, there's a spot where people try to, try to, try to turn off of fifty-eight and um, they don't actually go into the parking spot, so. I, I do know that we addressed some of those issues, I, I just think it's best to just to, to get them in at this point.
So you don't think that we should go for a site plan where they're going further and adding lighting and doing all that?
So that's what I, that's what I'm saying, I think that we need the opportunity to see if that is what he's doing. Um, obviously, if he is looking to go further, then um, maybe we do require one, but um, I, I think it's just a. Well, I think it's just something about if we can get him in here, um, maybe let him know about certain things that he may be limited to. Um, and figure out what his plans and ideas are for lighting.
Does anybody else have anything else to say, Brendan, Rick?
Yeah, well, I saw a thing from Joanne that Patel called today, said he's gonna turn the lights down and put them on a timer and so. That might help a little bit for now.
Yeah, they, I think also to Mark's point, if we can get them in here, make them aware of, of how the residents feel about their property and then ask them questions about what their future plans are, it might lead to Amy, you then saying, well, then we're gonna request a site plan. You know what I mean, so rather than going in there with an iron fist, we can get them in there, ask them what their things are and it's probably gonna lead to that, but at least that way they're aware of how the surrounding residents feel and I would assume that they're gonna be operating a business in town, they prefer to have the, the blessing of their surrounding residents.
I give them a chance to address it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then we should invite them to our um, June seventeenth meeting and maybe place them at um, eight?
That sounds good.
Okay, so, um.
Can I ask you a question, Amy? Uh, if they don't show up, what is the follow-up to that?
Well, like, he was here earlier tonight, so he probably just gave up on us, but if he had a time, then, you know, cuz we've been going on, it's, so I'm thinking that if we have a time, he'll come. Does everybody else agree with that?
Yeah, no, no reason to think otherwise yet, but we will cross that bridge, um, sometimes we do have that problem.
Nicole, Adam, are you satisfied with um, having them come in on the seventeenth and can you tell us what the lights look like tonight?
Yes, we're gonna bring you outside so you can, so you can see what, what we're dealing with.
Can you see my face? Oh, geez, yeah, alright. I know, looking handsome, sorry. Let me see, hold on. Alright. If I lose you, just let me know, but, so, so they have two up now, the electrician put them up so he could show us what we were dealing with, and there's gonna be two more plus a, like Nicole said, a sign light, uh, and then, so.
A new sign light?
So, yeah, so, so if you look, if you, if you look over, I guess, towards this, yeah, to the right.
Up, lost you.
Um, they wanna go with the first sign and then they wanna put two more of those white lights right there, and then they have that backlight, um, with that blue barrel is.
Two more of those white light.
At the door, and then they have another spotter light there, uh, facing kind of towards the dumpster, but it's bright, um, and then, so, like, like she showed you where the uh, telephone telephone pole is right there, those two lights kicked on and they flash right in our house, one of them is like, flashes right in my bedroom, but uh, with four lights. Plus another, so it'd be five, it's seven lights, I mean, you're trying to sleep like a normal human being and then you go, I have to sleep my bedroom window shut, my blinds. Um, and then, hold on, Nicole? Yeah, so, yeah, okay, so, where those lights are and then, so right here, there's bedrooms up top, second floor, and then the first floor, those are all bedrooms right there. Um, and the light just, it just shines right into the house, you know what I mean? So, and then they have, we have the chain link fence right here, too, so that, that won't block any light either. That's why we were requesting to try to get a fence put up, a high fence for all the traction, the traffic and all the people that are always constantly gawking at us in the backyard, like my wife's outside with my daughter at the pool, uh, people are constantly looking in our backyard, you know, and she doesn't feel comfortable, it's summertime, she wants to be in her bathing suit like everybody else, but she doesn't do it because people are just staring, so. Between that and like, oh, like I said, all those lights right there, it's, it's been nothing but an issue and all the trash, it's, I mean, I, I've lived here for almost five years and this, that parking lot is probably the dirtiest I've ever seen, Nicole.
Alright, well, ju- just so you know, those are issues that we can address and the, the lights um, certainly shouldn't be leaving the property, that's another thing that's under, under our review, so.
Mm-hmm.
Just giving a little chance to get to them and uh, the, the guy was, I assume, because of um, how, how things went last time, that he should be open and responsive to these things.
I agree, and he was here earlier, I think he probably just gave up tonight, so we'll just schedule it for eight o'clock, does everybody think that's a good idea for June seventeenth?
I wonder if that works.
Does anybody, oh, oh, wait a minute, I have a hand up, Mama Duke? Mama Dukes? Charlie, can you, or are you muted?
Oh, it's Kristen, Kristen Merle, Kristen Merle.
I'm sorry, it says Mama Duke.
Can you hear me? No, I'm Mama Dukes, oh, I'll let the other person go and then I'll come back on.
So, so I am, I'm right behind the liquor firm at twenty-six Bow Street. And I will attest to the light, there was one on over the winter time, and my bedroom is right there and the light was shining through the trees, and like, again, I second the trash, it's such an eyesore to drive by and see. I agree, it's the worst it's ever looked, I've lived here for ten years, but the lights, you know, even with the trees right now, they're still shining into my yard and it's just, I, I agree, there needs to be some lighting in a parking lot, um, but uh, something's gonna be done, the lights were shining in the winter time right through the trees and I know the electrician's made a comment that it didn't affect my property and it does affect my property.
Okay, thank you, Kristen. Alright, Mama Duke? And who is this, again?
Hi, this is Jamie, and we're at ten Bow Street, uh, my property abuts the back end of the property in complaint. Um, the lights are definitely an issue, uh, I've actually had to go out and purchase some blackout curtains so I can sleep and I'm not a lunatic with my eleven-year-old and my husband and, and the dog. The Japanese knotwood is actually coming in, so I will have the spoil of four months of natural fencing, but for the rest of the three quarters of the year, I'd like to know how we're gonna handle that. Um, I'm not gonna take up too much of your time, I am going to write a letter of points of interest, concern and major concern, and I don't know if I should just send that to Joanne Snow or if I should CC you, Amy, on that, or if there's anyone else on the board who needs a copy.
If you send it to Joanne, we're all gonna get it.
That's excellent, alright, and then June seventeenth, eight PM?
Yes.
Thank you.
You bet.
Could I just make one point too, that's Nicole Nelligan, um, we were told today that the building will be open in ten days.
Ten days' time.
About ten days up and running by their workers.
Yeah, I'm not sure as far as that licensing goes.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we were told today, that they were gonna be open in about ten days, so, I mean, just, uh,
Okay.
But you can make, make you guys aware of that, you know what I mean?
Yeah, it kind of sinks just because we, with our meetings were limited, so it's two weeks away, um, um, ho- hopefully because we got a response from the guy, hopefully he did put on some timers a- and that helps until we can get him in here and, and fix all of these things.
Yeah, they, they, they have the timer, so I walked over there when I got home from work, I was talking to the electrician, he showed, he showed me the timer and they can set it to whatever times they want, turning on and turning off, uh, and he was saying that they have to be, they have to be on until eleven o'clock at night, if, when they're up and running and uh, they have to be off by like eight o'clock in the morning, but at, people are trying to sleep before eleven o'clock to go to work. I work in Boston and I go to bed at nine and get up at four thirty, five o'clock every day to, to drive into the city, you know, so eleven o'clock in the light shining in my bedroom, like I said, I had to keep the blinds shut to sleep and when it's ninety degrees out, I, I mean, I put the shades down so I don't get the light in my room, but it's, it's hard to sleep when your bedroom's hot too, you know?
Now, we can, we can definitely get a happy medium here where they can light their parking lot and nobody's affected outside of the property, that's definitely something we're gonna aim for.
Yeah, I mean, it should be pretty much the same thing, we just did a flower.
That's what I'm saying, it's something that we all know that we can do, it's just, just getting it implemented.
Okay, so we're open in ten days, um, does everybody still have the same opinion? I'm gonna talk to the board now, um, of what we should do.
I think that's the best course of action, yes.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, just from what my understanding of the bylaws are so far, it's just, there's not much we can do before then, but at least hopefully the residents are satisfied with the fact that it'll happen, you know, four days after their opening, cuz it'll be fourteen days from today, right? So, I mean, it, it will be on the next agenda addressed and, and hopefully, you know, implemented, some kind of solution.
Well, then that's so moot, okay? Um, should we?
So there's nobody that likes the lights, right?
Oh, right, those, especially the video really helped, Mr. Nelligan, it really helped, um, for us to understand.
We'll definitely put.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, thank you, and uh, now we'll uh, invite Gordon back and um, move on to um, some discussion on Franklin Street Solar Array.
Okay, I think this was just still on the agenda for the um, as Bill. Is um, has everybody had an opportunity to, to take a look at it? No, I, I have not seen it.
Alright, well, we really gotta get into the office then and make sure everybody, right?
Yeah.
For the seventeenth?
Yes. So I would suggest we just put it off to the seventeenth, we can have it on the table to take a look at it there.
Okay.
Agreed.
I second that, yeah.
And?
Past your lane, there's um, I do not have an update right now, I gave the last update, I had the last meeting. I'll see if I can get some definite information before the next meeting. And then the next thing would be subdivision control regulation, chapter two thirty-five, six, chapter six, uh, C and uh, timeframe. We need to do is set up a hearing to, to take a look at that.
That's what we were talking about, extending to a full fourteen days?
I, I believe it's fourteen now, the state has it as twenty-one. So it was a matter of changing our reg to, to match what the state is. They, when it first came out, it was fourteen days and that's what we had and the state has changed since then.
Okay, so that's two thirty-five dash five, oh, sorry, dash six, C.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, um, okay.
So what I would suggest is that everybody take a look at um, two thirty-five and see if there's some other things that need to be taken a look at and we can discuss it at the next meeting. And then we could set a hearing, I'm not sure if a hearing would work the week before, the fourth of July, or the week after, you know? So, may- maybe it's something I don't know what the, what the board's feeling is, whether people are gonna take off for vacation during July or not. You wanna try to schedule a hearing for them or you like to do it for August?
Um.
So, you're talking about July E?
It would be, to help you, it would be July
First or fifteenth.
The fifteenth.
First of the fifteenth. Well, we could, we could set it up for August and then we could have discussion for the next meeting, or next two.
I like, I think I like that idea. August fifth or nineteenth?
I'd say probably do like August fifth, we'll pencil it in for that, and that, that works for everybody. That'll give us time to um, advertise it, and if we come up with some more changes, put those in. Alright. Did everybody get a chance to read the correspondence?
Yes.
And the ZBA Country Club Estates Project has been continued to July twenty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Yep.
And then we do have um, meeting minutes for April first. Everybody said a chance to look those over if you wanna take a motion.
Motion to accept the minutes from April first.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Alright, uh, hold on, just, um, I don't know if it's a procedural. I don't know if it's a procedural thing. I don't know, Brendan, if you can, where you are not present.
Oh, I thought because I was, okay.
Because I think on that one, you'd have to sign the sheet or something and you gotta watch.
Got it.
Yep.
I thought, I thought the requirement was just to have written. Make sure they line up with everything we were talking about, but that makes sense, Mark, sorry.
All right, not to steal his thunder, but I will make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for April first, twenty twenty one.
Okay, I have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, take a roll call vote, Rick?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And Gordon, yes. Okay, I think that pretty much concludes what we have. Anybody else have anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Can I second that?
Oh, go ahead, Hannah.
I'll second, I'll second that.
Okay, roll call, Rick?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Amy?
Yeah.
Brendan?
Yes.
Gordon, yes. All right, thank you.